First case, Lisa is not here. So, who's gonna do the heavy reading? Who feels like doing the heavy reading? She's out away, by the way.
Yes.
In the area. She had to go to the airport and had to pick up her daughter or something, whatever. Okay. The first case is for-
You want me to read?
Andrew Hudson, June Hudson, 9 Pine Acres Road, Lunenburg, Mass.
You want me to read it?
No, the subject property is located at 9 Pine Acres Road.
Twenty-nine.
See, I know what nine looks like.
Yeah, nine is our home.
See, when I looked at it quickly, my eyes fell down on nine. Then I, after I went to turn around, my eyes then again fell on twenty-nine.
Correct.
So, I put 'em all in my think tank, if you know. Okay. And you're here to, seeking a special permit for dimensional variation of a twelve-foot, a twelve-foot for a second-story addition to the house. And we have discussed this to make sure that everything was in order, and if it doesn't, I get my hands slapped for not doing my work. So, what we do is, we have the petition as read, and I'm stalling for time to get Lisa here, but she doesn't do it. Pardon?
I'll read it if you want.
You're gonna do the reading? Okay, you'll be described.
Thank you.
So, what we do is, read the petition. Then you speak to it if you would like, you don't have to. Then we open it for public discussion, and then for our against, and we cut that off and then when the board deliberates. And with that, can we have the reading?
Okay. The name and address of each applicant is Andrew Hudson, William Hudson, June Hudson, 9 Pine Acres Road, Lunenburg, Mass. The undersigned makes a petition as follows, seeking a special permit for dimensional variation of twelve feet for a second-story addition. The application for the same dated 7/9/13 was submitted to the building inspector and was denied by the same for reasons stated in the letter attached here, too. If a building or use permit was applied for a copy, it shall be attached to this form. The building has not, or proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application for the special permit is found the following section of Lunenburg zoning bylaws, 8.3.2.1b4. Address identifying the building which is subject to this case is 29 Pine Acres Road, Lunenburg. The assessor's map and parcel is 50-23. The name and address of each holder or legal title of the land which is the subject of this case is the estate of Hazel Bersy, Cheryl Marsette, administrator, 7 East Dunbarton Road, Groftown, New Hampshire. Deed recorded in Western North District Registry of Deeds, Book 1239, page 164, recorded on 2/19/1980. There is no prior knowledge of any prior appeal, application or petition concerning the land or building involved in the case. And relative to questions answered under special, uh, under twelve, number twelve, special permits only, the proposed use will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons. Answer, the proposed use for this home is a residential dwelling and will fit the nature and use of the homes in the neighborhood. Question, part B, the proposed use will not have a material adverse effect of, on the land, on the value of the land, and buildings in the neighborhood, or on amenities of the neighborhood. Answer, with the proposed building improvements, this home's value will greatly increase, both monetarily and aesthetically. Proportionally, it will have a positive effect on the value of the surrounding home's property values and fit in very nicely, keeping with the feel and nature of the neighborhood. The proposed use will not be an open use of Part C, Part D. Statement, the proposed use will not produce noise, vibrations, smoke, dust, heat, odor, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of the adjacent property. Answer, the proposed use will be a residential dwelling, the same as the adjacent properties and all the properties in this neighborhood. Signed, the 9th of July, 2013, by the three as mentioned before. Included also are the drawings of the outside view from the left and right, the lot plan showing the existing structure with the septic tank and other appropriate information. There's also a letter included. Do you want me to read that letter that's included?
Read it.
Okay. It's dated July 11, 2013, addressed to Don Bowen, zoning board of appeals chairman, town of Lunenburg, Mr. Bowen. We are the present owners of the property located at 29 Pine Acres Road in Lunenburg, Mass. We have signed a purchase and sales agreement with Andrew Hudson, William Hudson, and June Hudson, the buyers. We understand the buyers presently, or represented by Andrew Hudson, need to obtain a building permit in order to proceed with their financing for the purchase of this property. We also understand that it may be necessary for the buyers to go before the board of appeals in order to obtain an exception, or exceptions, to obtain the required permit, or permits. This letter is to confirm that the buyers, represented by Andrew Hudson, have our permission and are proceeding on our behalf to obtain any and all permits necessary and to represent us before any board required, including the zoning board of appeals. Sincerely, Cheryl Marsette, Pamela Eddy, Stephen Bersy, and Donna Bersy.
Thank you very much. Having read it, would you like to speak to it? If you would, you have to get up and talk to the mic since we're on television. Anything you want to say?
Just want to say, my name is Andrew Hudson.
Your name and address?
Andrew Hudson, 9 Pine Acres Road in Lunenburg. I grew up on the street my whole life. I'm just looking to purchase my first home, and I just want to, you know, increase the size a little bit so I can start a family and just improve the neighborhood. That's all.
Anybody else should like to speak? If not, we'll, no, we'll open it up for public discussion. Anybody would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the request, please state your name. Hearing none, we've cut off public discussion and bring it to the board. Gentlemen, people.
I didn't have any questions.
Okay. I made my site visit. I know you fellows were talking about trying to locate the home, but I think I found it on the 10th. And one of the things that struck me is that there are a number of neighboring houses that are two-level, so seem to be in keeping with what the neighborhood is. I noticed a, what looked like an abandoned oil tank in the backyard. I think you're, somebody's clearing that now, preparing for-
Yeah, that was just a fire pit that-
You have to, you have to speak.
That was just a fire pit that the old neighbor, that's now deceased, used to use to burn.
Oh.
So, it's gone, yeah. It's being disposed of.
So, and the clearing is for what purpose? Do you know?
Oh, for the yard. To open up the yard, to put a new septic tank in.
Okay.
New septic system, which I already got testing, and I have a permit from the board of health.
So, you've secured the permit already?
Correct, yeah. I have the permit.
Yeah. I have another question for you. The, you know, from the material that was submitted, I wasn't sure if the house is going to have the same footprint, or are you just adding a second floor? Is that it or not?
That's correct. I'm gonna leave the same footprint that's there right now and just put a second floor on.
Okay.
But just keep the existing footprint. So, the only thing that will change is that the roof line will get steeper. Right now, the house is already 16 feet tall, which already, it was just grandfathered in, so it's just gonna increase the pitch on the roof.
Mm-hmm.
So, the footprint will stay the same.
So, you're utilizing the existing ground level and just building a second floor on top of that, is what you-
That's correct.
-like to do. Okay.
Any further questions?
Um, no.
Okay, anybody else have comments?
Yeah, I stopped by, Mr. Chairman. Basically, he just wants to put a dormer on and raise the roof to get some additional living space upstairs. There's nothing but tree line behind him, the lake's in front of him, so it's not, he won't be obstructing anybody's view. I didn't see an issue with anything. That's just my comment.
Any other comments?
No.
And the, if there are none, then the chair is prepared to accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the permit as requested.
Second.
Any further discussion or comments? No further discussion? Then all those in favor of granting the special permit as requested, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none? We wish you well. It was easier than I even I thought.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a nice day and enjoy your building.
Aren't you gonna read your usual spiel?
I gotta read, yeah. I've gotta read some good stuff. The privilege of the chair is having to talk a lot. Okay, and the special permit is granted, we grant the special permit because the board of appeals did assure, as we show, but we did, that the request would not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons. That it would not have a material adverse effect on the value of the land and buildings in the neighborhood or in the amenities thereof. That it will be operated with, this is its construction with reasonable regard to order and sight and the rest of, that would probably apply to the building process, but, and anything that you do will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable from the lot line in amounts clearly detrimental. You can have bodies, I would imagine, to the normal use of the adjacent property. The special authorization is granted if the contingent that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinances of any and all applicable state, local, and federal boards or agency with jurisdictions over the premise. The granting of special permit inurges to the benefit of the applicant. The special permit is subject to periodic review for the permit, by the permit granting authority, that's the zoning board of appeals, or the enforcing office to ensure compliance with enumerated conditions. Noncompliance of these conditions may result in the revocation of the permit, and those, since there are no conditions applied here, would be the normal conditions that would be enforced by the building inspector as you proceed. It would take, anybody can appeal the decision of this board to superior court within 20 days after it's filed with the clerk. It will be filed with the clerk within 14 days, and then, so anything you do, you do at your risk, knowing that if someone wanted to come along and take the issue to, the board, to the courts, then that would occur. And with that, we wish you well.
Thank you. Good luck.
The next one is- That was easy. Now, I guess what we can do is recess for, we got a 7:30, right?
All right, yeah. I don't see, I don't see the applicant here.
I think that we, since we have to hold it at 7:30 on the line-
This is a continued one for, we're on mode.
The chair is requesting that we go into recess until 7:30.
So moved.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you, uh-
We're on, Mr. Chairman.
We're on?
We're on.
Okay. Well, welcome to the Lunenburg zoning board of appeals. We're back again. And the case right now is a continuation of Mr. Aliva. Get the good paperwork out in front of me. Oh, here we go. 93 Wellerum Road, Lunenburg, Mass. And we're looking for Mr. Aliva.
Please break that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Knocking on you.
Let me see over there.
You're kind of quiet.
Okay. The last time that we were here, we were, you had not put everything together in terms of getting an orderly fashion of the land, and also getting to, getting together with the board of health. And we were hopeful, we were hopeful that today, that everything would be in order. I'm understanding that maybe that is not the case.
Due to vacations, I don't have the paperwork from the board of health on the issue that I had, have, and I probably won't be able to get that till next week, so I'm here tonight to ask the board to put me off till the next meeting.
Has the board of health responded to you yet?
Yes, yes.
In other words, there is a communication?
Yes, oh, yes. Yes.
I would say, did we get a correspondence from the board of health we got in this application?
I didn't get one.
You didn't, so the board doesn't have the information from the board of health. I would expect that that should be in order, that we would have the same information as you have.
Right.
So, that you're not in a position to go forward now, because we, the board does need to have the information from the board of health.
Exactly.
Do you have a sense of where it is? Is it positive, negative, or neutral?
Positive.
Do you think it's positive?
Just, I need the paperwork to present to the board so we can, we can move on.
Has the, has the equipment on the site been improved since the last time we-
It has been improved, and I am happy to say I have found a better home for- I have found a better home for one of my relics that you have noticed in the past, and it will be leaving this week also.
This application is going on for a long time. And the question is what to do about it? What are you asking of the Board now?
To put me on for the next meeting if there was available time. A meeting in two weeks.
It would appear that the next meeting is, we can't do it because the next meeting, everything is filled up regarding our forty B project. Lisa, what is the next possible time that we can get together?
September eleventh.
September eleventh? It's up to the Board. One might imagine that if we continue it to September eleventh, that at that time, the Board should be able to feel that it's time to take an action one way or another. And then there become some couple of possibilities. One is to take and make a decision in the affirmative or in the negative. Another one is potential for if you were not able to comply with the expectation of the Board, that you potentially, and it's up to the Board in this case, is to withdraw without prejudice until you've got everything back together again for a decision. And if that were to be the case, it would appear that everything needs to be in absolute order, as you could appreciate. With that, that's just, I'm just rambling to put thoughts in the mind of the Board, which I'm sure they have their own. So I open it up to the Board to see what they believe is appropriate in this case. And by the way, one thing. In addition to your application in the Board for the used cars association with the secondary use of the trucks that we have been discussing, there could be other issues with the building inspector that have nothing to do with this Board. And if this Board were to grant whatever way, everything will be subject to compliance with whatever the building inspector, the enforcing officer, has on his table. But that issues, those issues are not the issues of this Board. So with that, I open it up to the Board for discussion.
Just a comment. I made a site visit again last Saturday. And in my opinion, I think you've got a long ways to go yet to get that site looking to be a good neighbor to the residential neighbors you have. And I still have a question in my mind about what looks like accumulated oil spills over time in that yard. So that's just my reaction from the site visit as I took a ride by there last Saturday.
We do need to get a direct letter from the Board of Health, I would expect, to this Board, Lisa. Acquiring the communication from the Board of Health regarding this issue.
Absolutely.
Just an observation. I see on my calendar that the eleventh is a holiday. Is that Patriot Day, is that?
No, it's the anniversary of September eleventh.
Patriot Day, oh. Oh, yeah. Must be it.
Because it's for Wednesday.
Yeah. So what is the sense of the Board? I guess we're at a point where the Chair could accept a motion for discussion regarding this matter.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I'm willing to continue it for another month. But I think that's probably going to have to be it. At some point, we do have to close this hearing. And it seems to be, we haven't really gotten anywhere since it started. So, I mean, I think if, at that time, then I think we're going to have to really make a decision one way or the other.
So then it would be, everything would be on the table, the granting?
I would think so, Mr. Chairman.
The withdrawal, the granting, the denial, or the willingness of the Board to allow the petition to withdraw without prejudice. Would you leave that on the table?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. I think we've been pretty indulgent up to this point. And, you know, we can't just continue this forever.
Further comment?
I tend to agree also. I've been by the last couple of days too, and I noticed a lot of improvement has been made out front even more. And it's, looking at the building straight on, there's almost nothing in the front, and there's nothing on the left-hand side other than one vehicle. And I'm assuming that's the one that you were alluding to would be going somewhere else. So it does appear that, you know, progress has been made. But hopefully, you've got a month, and that'll, we'll see at that time. And we'll hear from the Board of Health by then. And hopefully, they will address the issue because that should have been addressed in there about prior questions of oil spill or something like that.
What about the agreements with the?
With the town?
Payment.
I've been making my?
We should have an update on that by the next meeting as well.
An update on what?
The agreement between the applicant and the town on payment of?
I could bring that in with me also.
Yeah, remember, because those issues will be absolute roadblocks, even if we were to be disposive to grant there. That's a major roadblock, okay. All right, the Chair will accept it. Let's put it in terms of a formal motion for how we're going to handle this.
I move that we continue.
What's the framing?
Move that we continue this meeting until September the eleventh. At what time should we put it on?
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock?
We have nothing else.
Second. Okay. Any further, or just leave it there?
Yeah, I think the applicant knows what we want. We want finality.
All right, so, okay. All those in favor of granting the continuation to the date of? What is the date again?
September eleventh.
September eleventh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? None?
Thank you.
Give us time to, and it's probably better off having, instead of the next meeting, have it out a month because that gives you some time to put pieces together and to fine tune. It might be in your interest to approach the?
Building?
Building inspector or somehow or other. If you've got questions, communicate them. Because you'd like the final package of the site to be clean. Well, if we're going to it, and as Ray says, he isn't quite satisfied, well, I guess you'd want him to be satisfied before we have that meeting.
He and I did meet last week. He came down to the site last Thursday. We talked about a couple of things.
Because I think everybody knows what we need, what endpoint we need to be at. Okay, so?
Very good. We'll put it to closure that day.
We're looking forward to seeing you then.
Thank you.
Good night.
And with that, I guess we go into another recess.
I move that we recess until eight o'clock.
Do we second to the recess?
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye, and we will return at eight o'clock.
All right, welcome to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals and we're back from our recess. I was gonna make a comment but we'll just pass over it. Lisa.
This is an application for a special permit.
By the way, we should say these folks may not be pretty sharp because with all of the stuff we had to... How we do it is we have the petition read and then you can speak to it, just for the folks at home. And then we open it up for public discussion and then after the public discussion we'll cut it off to the board for further discussion. And with that Lisa, would you please?
This is an application for a special permit, and a special permit for dimensional variation. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Frances and Beth Ann Novak, 44 Lancaster Street in Lemonster. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows. Request a special permit for the reconstruction of a non-conforming structure, Section 741. Request a special permit for dimensional variation of height, Section 83214. And request a 15-foot height relief on the right side and a 12-foot height relief on the left side. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application for special permit is found in the following sections of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 741 and 83214. The street address of the property...
Correction on the reference, it should be 8321B4.
B4, thank you. The street address of the property is 380 Sunset Lane in Lunenburg. Assessors' map and parcel, map 135, parcel 4 and 7. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Frances M. and Beth Ann Novak. And the deed was recorded in Winston Norton District, registry of deeds, book 7886, page 197, recorded April 16, 2013. The special permit questions are as follows. A will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons. The redevelopment of this lot will provide for a new garage and driveway, improving the ability to accommodate parking on the lot and reducing the potential to impact traffic on Sunset Lane. Also, the redevelopment will improve the nature of existing steep slopes of the property, reducing the potential for instability and sliding of the slopes toward Lake Shirley. B will not have an adverse, material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. The existing lot and structures have been neglected in the past and are, and as such, are currently unsightly and in poor condition. The redevelopment of this lot should improve the value of this land and be more in harmony with the well-kept nature of the adjacent lots. Will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines if in open use. That's not applicable. D will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. The proposed use is a residential, single-family home. This use is consistent with that of the underlying zoning district as well as the surrounding properties. The nature of this use is such that noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare are not expected to be detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And that's signed August 2, 2013 by Frances M. Novak and Beth A. Novak. Attached is a list of abutters provided by the assessors' office, a rendering of what the proposed home is going to look like, and then a plot plan showing the existing house with an overlay of the proposed house and the septic system delineated with wetlands. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Would you like to address the board?
Yes, thank you.
Your show.
My name is Anthony Cleves, I'm from Whitman and Bingham Associates. We're the engineers for the project, here with applicant Frank Novak. So I'm gonna speak on behalf of him tonight. Okay, I'll just go through a summary of the project. So this plan here is an overall site plan of what they plan to do with the existing lot. What I've shaded in here in brown is the proposed house, deck, porch, new driveway, retaining wall on the back, some new slope and grading, septic system in the front of the lot. And then restore the land with lawn or landscape areas, mulch, plantings, and so on. This portion of Sunset Lane, if you're familiar with this area, is basically a peninsula that extends into Lake Shirley. We have Lake Shirley on both sides of us, top and bottom. As such, we've had to file with the Conservation Commission when we've done so and received an order of conditions from their last meeting. So as was mentioned, we're here tonight for two reasons, two special permits. One is for a non-conforming structure. This existing lot is, has less than the required area that the zoning requires. It's 15,600 square feet. It's a lot that's been existing since 1955, consistent with many of the lots alongside Sunset Lane. What's that?
How many square feet did you say?
15,600.
I'm showing for the record 13,068.
Right, I think you're counting both sides.
Both sides, yep. Because it's, they own, there's two parcels that make up this with Sunset Lane as a right-of-way that goes through. So, I guess if you're just looking at this side, it's gonna be around the 13,000. We're considering this as one whole lot, but yep, that's, yep, that's a good correction, yep, thank you. So due to the undersized lot, it makes the existing structure non-conforming as well. As was mentioned, here's the existing structure there on the lot. And so the house we're proposing conforms to the dimensional setbacks as far as relationship from the house to the property lines. Where this lot has also less than the required width, there's a provision in the zoning, as I'm sure you're well aware, to reduce your side yard setbacks proportionally to the amount of width that you have less than the required. And we meet that. Then also that goes into the second special permit that we're requesting and that is for the height of the structure. As you're getting well aware, maximum height is 38 feet, which we're below that. But another clause is that you can't be more than five feet greater than the horizontal distance to your property lines. And because of the narrowness of the existing lot, we're gonna be close to the property line so it's difficult to meet that requirement. I can show you first. This is an elevation of your architectural rendering of the house. This is the front view, as you'd be, you know, Sunset Lane looking at the front of the house here. This is the rear view as you would see it from Lake Shirley. You know, so basically three levels, one below grade but at grade with Lake Shirley. And the areas that we're requesting the relief for the height are on the sides of the property. We have the left-hand side, as you're looking at the property from the street. We have a 31-foot height to the top, the nearest point, the highest point of the house there, and a 27-foot height on the right-hand side, and this is the garage. Right-hand side, the garage here, that's the 27-foot height. Left-hand side, that's the 31-foot height. So, you know, due to the varying distances we are off the property land, that's why the requests are a little different, 15 feet on one side and 12 feet on the other, based upon how far away we are from the property lines. That's a quick summary.
Pardon?
That's a quick summary for the project, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we have formally a public discussion. Are those in favor again? And it looks like we don't have too many people here so we will formally open and close public discussion and turn it over to the board. Gentle people. Look to my left. I suspect you have something. I visited the site last Saturday, yes it was. One of the things that struck me was that the present structure, which is, almost looks like it's ready to give up the ghost and collapse, but in any case, my observation is that the present structure is already taller than the houses on either side of that property. And so in a way, I guess I'm a little surprised that there's nobody here from the abutters list that has any concern about that. But my observation is that that's gonna even be considerably more dramatic, the difference in the height and what you're proposing and what it is now, which is already higher than the other houses.
Yeah, I mean, if I can. We're, this is, as you know, being out there, it's a high point of Sunset Lane. The lot itself is higher than the abutters, absolutely. And we're actually cutting the grade down a little bit of the lot to try and reduce a little bit of that and lowering ourselves down, absolutely. We're not gonna impact any of their sightlines, you know, sightlines are, you know, are towards Lake Shirley and those are still gonna be maintained. The current property owners, the Novaks... The current property owners, the Novaks, have been in discussions with, with both neighbors on, on either side, you know, from the beginning of this process, and have met with them, kind of explained what they're planning on doing. You know, for the feedback that we've gotten is, they seem to be, you know, in favor of the project, they'd like to see this property developed. You know, and as you can see, it's, you know, the structure is, is not in good shape, there's a steep slope on the back, it's, you know, it just, it just hasn't been used for, for some time, so it's, I think they're, they'd like to see it used. And this would be not a summer home, this is, be a primary residence, you know, this is a, you know, this is going to be where they're going to live and take care of it. Different, I think it may have been used in the past, and it's more consistent with how, you know, the adjacent homes are. You know, if you've been out there, you've seen it, you know, that, you know, people really, you know, they live there, they're taking care of their land, so they're going to try and do the same thing there.
It looked to me like those were year-round homes on either side of this.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, and that's what, that's what we're planning on doing here. This will be their, their primary residence.
There was a time, back in the 80s, that they were camps or enhanced camps, so everything has been developed over the, from 1980 forward.
And, and as-
You make an interesting point about the height relative to the, the land portion. The houses that are sitting there now do, live to the, the big lake and, and also to the code that it abuts, so there's two sides of the activity to the neighbors, are water-oriented, if you will, which probably accounts to why that if you're going up side by them, if you're going up on, on the side, it, it doesn't seem to interfere with their lifestyle.
Right. I mean, the, the primary real estate is, is, is your, is your waterfront, you know, that's, and that's, and you can see just by going around the water, that's where people, they have, you know, beautiful walls, landscaping, lawn areas, seating areas, you know, that's, that's what they're achieving, that nice waterfront property. And some people have the luxury of doing it on both sides, we can't do that here. This is really a really steep slope on the sides, we can't benefit from it, but you can see-
Nobody's done anything over there that I saw.
Yeah, I mean, down here is a garage, you know, on the other side of the street, where they've been able to, to use both sides, yep. But yeah, I mean, you're right, it's, it's, you know, the, this is the area that everyone, you know, really, that's their focal point, and that's what they use for their yards. You can even see here, this is our neighbor's existing house and shed, and here's our property line, you know, so they're, they're very close to our, you know, the property line too, and they, unfortunately, that's the nature of, of these old lots. You have very little room, so it's, you, you use the lot to the most, most you can.
Now, there's going to be considerable tree, did you mention, you, you mentioned something about the grade, or actually, is this house-
Yep, so-
-lower than, than what's present?
So if, I don't know how much you walked, walked around, but I, you have the existing house here that sits higher than, than Sunset Lane, slopes up.
Right.
And then slopes very steep down the back, there's actually tires buried in the, in the back of the house, I'm assuming to provide some stability to the slope. Very steep slope down to a falling over timber wall, and then it's relatively flat as you get along the water. And there, there are pine trees over there, and the growth in the ground is just basically pine needles, so there isn't, isn't much vegetation there. So what the intent would be is lower the grade here a little bit, so it, and actually, the, the first floor of the house is going to be a little bit lower, if not at grade with the top of Sunset Lane, so we're going to cut that grade down a little bit.
Okay.
You know, to help kind of push it down, and it actually helps a little bit with the grading on either side, because as you can see, our abutters have retaining walls on either side, because this lot is built up, is existing higher than the other ones. So we want to cut that grade down a little bit. You know, this abutter probably won't even need one of his walls anymore, he'll have a little more of a, of a landscape area to play with. And then you'll transition, so the front yard will be relatively flat, and then you slope down like a walkout basement kind of a house. You slope down the sides, so then your lower level is, you're down about eight or nine feet lower than your first floor, and then you step down one more tier to get down to the water level. And that's what we have, this is a timber wall there that we would get rid of and put up a new wall to support the earth, there'd be a patio underneath this deck. And like, then you drop down another six feet or so, and then you're at water grade.
So the grade is going to change dramatically from what it is now?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be changed, absolutely, and we think it's going to be an improvement, where you're going to have, you know, there, it's like a one and a half to one slope, which is typically not a stable slope. Even with, with good vegetation, those can be prone to sliding, and there really isn't any vegetation, pine needles and some of the trees, so we're going to take the curse off of that slope, go to more like a two-to-one, three-to-one slope, and that'll be, and you can, and it's not as extensive. It's just going to be on the sides here. This will be like a four-to-one slope, and this is more of a three-to-one slope, much more stable on its own. And then instead of the area that's, that's, the steep slope is like this right now, going across the back of the property. So I don't believe it's going to be an improvement there.
There's a number of trees on that, on that lot that will be coming down, right?
Yes, yes. Yep, that's correct.
Is there going to be any left? You know, I couldn't really tell.
No, I mean, no, the, most of those trees will be, will be gone, and, and they're mostly, the pine trees don't provide a lot of value. We actually went over that with the Conservation Commission during their meeting, there were some trees along the water that we talked about, we'd like to take down as well, and we had some discussion on that, and they, they were agreeable on that. Again, you know, where those trees are old, they don't provide any beauty, any screening, they don't provide anything for wildlife, you know, so I think it's, they'll, they'll plan on putting back, you know, bushes and flowers, it's going to be a much more enhanced landscape-wise than what you see there now. But yep, we're going to have to take the trees down, absolutely.
I guess the question in my mind is, with the removal of those trees, what keeps the, the soil in place?
I mean, it's going to be the, the, the grass, you know, the vegetation, you know, the trees, roots provide some, you know, but, but not, but not much. Like, like anybody's lawn or any slopes that you see that have grass on it, it's the, the dense turf that holds the soil together. Anyone's ever just tried to dig out lawn, you pull out a big chunk, I mean, you've got all the soil there, you've got to shake it off, you know, take it to the soil out. If a tree falls over, you know, there's nothing holding anything up, like if these trees were to fall over here along the water, you're going to lose this retaining wall, and you're going to have all this go into Lake Shirley. So I don't feel as though those trees are of any value, I think if anything, they could be a detriment down the road. And then what, it's, if you want to clear these trees now, you're going to have a really tough time to get in there afterwards and cut those trees down. So I don't, I don't believe they provide much value for stability. It's going to be the changing of the grade to provide a more stable slope just in, in its angle, and then putting back vegetation covering the entire surface.
Now, the septic is going to be on the street side of this house, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. And that's, that's, that's where it is now, again, it's really the only spot you can put it. We have wells, there's a proposed well in the back here, an existing well here, an existing well on the other person's property, and an existing well here. There was a previous septic system upgrade approved a few years ago in the same location. We've altered that a little bit, but basically kept it in the same location, we've done testing. We have a Board of Health meeting next week to go over that. The Shova Board of Health has seen the plan, and they've done their review, I hadn't gotten any comments back from them.
I noticed that in the present driveway, I guess what was the driveway or parking area, that there's some sort of a little cave-in at the, at the front of-
Yeah, I can explain that, sure. That was a test hole for the septic system. We had to do a new testing to, to verify the depth of groundwater and the suitability of the soils, so that's, and so, you know, digging that, this, this material is very, very sandy, so it didn't really hold itself up, so some of the walls had collapsed in, yep.
How far off the street, now, the footprint of that house, how far off the street is it? I couldn't tell from this-
Yep, 27.6 feet, which is further back than what the existing house is. The existing house, the front line is here, so we're back, I don't want to say, eight to 10 feet further back than what the existing house is, so a little bit further from the street, that's what I'm saying, we're going to, you know, that plus the garage, it gives us more room to, to park cars, you know, so you're not, you wouldn't have any, you know, cars parked along the side of the road, as you're driven up there, it's, you, you come up to the high point and then go back down, and it gets narrow, so it's, allows us to kind of open that up to fit, to fit cars in the lot.
The footprint of this house, now, lot coverage, I don't, you know, from my looking through the bylaws, I didn't see that there was a, a coverage problem.
It's a 30%.
I only made it.
And it's well within that. In other words, even with the 13,000.
Yeah.
I did some calculations.
We came to the same conclusion.
The, the total house is 3,400 square feet, 3,400 square feet.
Total in, in each, altogether, a footprint, but-
And the, the lot itself-
Say that again, what, excuse me. You said 34, but-
Not the footprint.
Not the footprint. That is what I was looking at.
That's all store, the, all the stories are 3,400.
No, I'm saying that's the foot-
The total square footage, first floor, second floor, third floor.
The footprint, 78 by 36 is 2,800, and then, uh-
What's the second floor?
The, is another 600 on the, not the second floor, on the porch, the porch area. 600 square feet, 12 by 50.
What? What, do you include, what, did you add the, the deck?
Yeah, the deck, 12 by 50.
I just used the footprint of the house.
12 by 600, but it still complies with the, with the 30%.
Yeah, I think, I think either way, we're fine.
And the bottom line is, it complies. One thing is slightly, slightly confused over in my mind, because apparently I didn't do all of my homework. I'm looking at the lot as 13,000, then you said it's 15,000. Is it, is it two, is it, is it two lots?
No, it's, well, the assessors has it listed as two lots, but it's, it's one, it's one lot with a right-of-way through it. They actually own, I, I understand, the town of Lunenburg does not own the land underneath Sunset Lane, it has a right-of-way, a public right-of-way to pass and repass through here. So this is, this is one lot, split by the right-of-way of Sunset Lane. The assessors has it assessed separately. I can, I have an old plan, if you want to see that of when these lots were, were created, if that's-
Yeah, the assessors, the, the assessors for the house show it at 13-
It's two lots, yeah, and they threw that for everywhere, for everyone, for assess, for, for assessment.
But it's, it's, it's a mute point in that it's still, even with a smaller footprint, it still complies with the 30%.
I believe, yeah, I believe it does, yep. Yep.
So, so that complies with 7.4.3.
Right, I came to the same conclusion. You had a different percentage, but it was still within the limits. One of the things I noticed on the, on the plans that were submitted is that we have sheets one and two of six, which made me curious what the other four sheets were.
Yeah, the, the other sheets are the floor plans. I, I brought them tonight if I want to see them, I didn't know if you needed to see those, but it's the first floor plan, second floor plan, roof, roof plan, that's what those sheets are.
So, and you've already met with Conservation Commission?
Correct. Yep, and they issued an order of conditions at their last meeting.
Do we have any communications from Conservation?
I didn't see any.
They didn't, I think she provided the order of conditions, but I didn't bring it with me.
This is the original, I don't want to leak this, because we have to record that, but they just signed that at their last meeting.
That should be read into our records.
We just got it, we just got it in the mail today.
Yeah, no, I'm-
That's fine, yep.
Yeah, as a condition.
That the-
If the board should, should grant, then that would be a condition.
Sure, I mean, I would-
That it meets this.
That, that we have to-
Pardon?
That it meets this criteria.
Yeah.
I mean, we would have to adhere to any-
We, we have a cover-all that covers, we can't get in trouble.
Right, we have to meet everyone else's conditions as well, absolutely, yep.
Yeah.
That's the only questions I had.
And the septic systems.
So we're going to the Board of Health Monday night, this coming Monday night, for that. We've submitted the plans to the Nishoba Board of Health, and they've reviewed them, didn't have any, any comments, so now we're going to, to the Lunenburg Board of Health for their, hopefully, approval Monday night.
Yeah.
It's the same thing we'd have to adhere to-
The, the, Nishoba does, does the footwork for, for Lunenburg.
Yeah, but they, but the, but the Board of Health, so there's, there's, because this is a, an existing lot with an existing failing system, it's going under an upgrade, so there are a couple waivers we're asking for, specifically, like everyone in this area, we're closer than 100 feet to a water body, you can't not be with Lake Shirley on both sides, and then we're also closer than 100 feet to wells. You know, we're surrounded by wells, like, like everyone is. So those are the two, the two waivers we're going to be asking for, which, I understand, is, is a common practice in this area due to the nature of the existing homes.
Nature of the peninsula.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any further questions or points?
I'm done.
Anybody else? None whatsoever? Okay, I guess, since we have no opposition appearing, I guess the chair is in a position to entertain a motion.
I'll make motion that we grant the special permission for the order of height and order of conditions. If what?
Well, that's already embedded.
That's already embedded, yeah. And the permit for the reconstruction of a non-conforming structure.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we need any further conditions to iterate outside from the, that the requirement for complying to all boards? Is that going to be satisfactory, or does, does any specific-
That works for me, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
That works for me, yeah.
Works for you? Okay. So, all right, so, all those in favor of granting the special permit as outlined, please say aye.
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 Aye. And with that, we're granting it, there's a few words I must say. In granting the special permit, the Board of Appeals did assure, it says shall, but we did, that it would not be injurious or dangerous to the public health, that it is unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons. They would not have a material adverse effect in the value of the land and buildings in the neighborhood or in the amenities thereof, and it would not produce, that it would only reply to construction. I'm sure there'll be some noises at times with an occasional cloudy, but, but it, it meets the compliance that we have to for a special permit. The special authorization is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, and ordinances of any and all applicable state, local, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdictions over the premises. That's our cover-all. And the granting of the special permit shall in order to the benefit of the applicant. The special permit is subject to the, for periodic review. I guess that would be in the construction phase. Mid granting authority, the zoning board or the enforcing officer to ensure compliance with the, with the enumerated conditions, and those conditions, in this case, will be outlined by compliance with the other boards, Board of Health and Conservation in this case. And with that, this, any decision of this board can be appealed to Superior Court within 20 days of the date that we- the exposure you have in that regard, and with that, we wish you well.
Did you say it should be recorded? What about recording?
You said-
Recorded at deeds.
Recorded at the registry?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I don't know what to do without the troops. You should record it at the registry of deeds, of course. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Good night. I only got one of my hearing aids and-
Next morning, bring the other one.
And with that, we can get out the motion to adjourn.
Aye, aye.
Second to it?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Put out the on-air lights.